Sewer and water credit for Homewood Suites for overpayment. Water is $298.04 and sewer is, it's actually $1,079.42. And then we also have UMass, top of the campus contingent, one day liquor license for January 25th, 2020, from 12:30 to 2:30. And that will be in the donor reception basketball champions center downstairs lobby area is where that'll be. But that one is contingent on approval from the fire chief, police chief, and at least those two. They have motion.
Make a motion to accept the consented agenda items that were not pulled off and including the addition of the UMass request of contingent upon favorable acceptance from the grounds of parties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Why don't we do the full-time, or the full-time firefighters first? Go ahead chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just wanted to introduce to you our two newest members of the department. They're not deployed yet, but we figured we'd get them introduced to the town. They're currently under their one-year probation and they've both been doing excellent for the few months that they've been here. So first off, I'd like to present Colin Beck. So I'd like to stand up. So Colin started, actually, I apologize. Colin's here with his parents, Ken and Rose, and his sister Rachel is behind. So Colin started with us in September. He took the position of courtney for Gau and he's from Bramby and graduated from Bramby High School in 2016, where he was dual enrolled and received his associate's degree in criminal justice from HCC as well in 2016. So as you can tell, what I'm heading towards here is he's a go-getter and he's proven that multiple times already. He started with Bramby Fire in 2016 and also joined South Hadley Fire District Number Two in 2017 and received his firefighter one certification in 2016 while working with Bramby Fire. He was, he attended the Hampshire Basic Six, his, and received his EMT basic certification in 2018. He currently, he currently works per diem for AMR and Bay State Medical Center as an emergency.
ED assistant.
An ED assistant. And he also helps out on South Hadley Fire District Number Two. So works there as a call force firefighter. Colin has received his pro board certification through the call volunteer program. He was classed zero seven nine along with that gentleman behind him, Liam Higgins from Hadley. He completed that program in October and did a great job through that whole thing. And Colin just completed his fire prevention officer level one in November and he's been working hard. Colin is assigned to Lieutenant Washdevits and Colin has been getting grilled because of course Brian used to be on the DPD and blowed every single road in Hadley. So he has been hammering him on driver training and learning the roads in town. And I'm sure if we gave him a test right now, he would probably shine. So he's been a great addition and he always is keeping us smiling and keeping us busy. And he's also always busy. He's always getting something done and working hard. He's also taken over the department Facebook page and has been working hard on getting up-to-date information out of work. So I'd like to present Colin with his probationary badge. I'll try and not stab him. Actually, Dad, don't want to stand up under it? For me?
He's gonna die.
Oh, I will.
We have paramedics standing by.
That one get closer up here?
Three, two, three.
Oh, three cut holes.
Just pull the proportion towards this.
Wow, that's, they're not pre-cut, oh, that are. This meeting's gonna last about two hours till I get this done.
We'll see you next week.
No, just leave it like that.
Sure.
You guys enjoy? And next up, we have Daniel Maier. And Danny is here with his mom, Danny, and his father, Nick, and a whole bunch of this family along with his girlfriend, Sam, from the back room. So Dan is our newest addition and started with Hadley Fire as a call force firefighter actually in 2018. Dan lives in Northampton and graduated from Northampton High School. And prior to coming to us, Dan worked as a shift supervisor at CBS and is currently and was at the time enrolled in the fire science program at GCC and is looking to complete his associate's degree in fire science, hopefully in this coming year. Dan completed the Hampshire Basic Six program and was an active call force member with us. And he actually applied for Colin's job and actually really took it upon himself to do it just to get the experience, see what he was lacking in, and he really loused the whole committee that actually did the review of it, to the point where we actually kept his resume and his application at the top of the list. He's also, just to let you know, he was working on his EMT program when he joined the call force and unfortunately, he didn't complete the final testing portion of it. He ran out of time to do it. Unbeknownst to me, prior to his being hired, he took it upon himself to sign up for the program, pay for the program again, and just completed the skills portion is now working on completing the testing. So again, another person who's just taken the initiative to get things done and he's passionate for this job and then we're really excited to have him. Let's see, what else I have? He is also working hard, learning the streets of Hadley and he is on Group A with Lieutenant McKenna. And again, I can't tell you how proud I am of both of them. They're a great addition and they're a pleasure to work with every day. So Daniel Maier.
My brother's here.
Should've had moms do it.
I got a glass.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to the board.
Yeah, welcome to the board.
Make a motion to accept, do we have to?
Yeah.
Yes, make a motion to accept Colin and Dan, the positions that they've just been appointed to, welcome to Hadley. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Of course.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Just give them a minute. Please stand. So naturally, we can look at the common bachelor license, tandem bagel. Are you guys here? Yeah. Yeah. So I'd love to hear from you.
Chris Lawkey and my wife Andrea, who are the owners of tandem.
Yeah.
And we finally are finishing our construction project, getting down to the end of it. Hopefully, end of January, beginning of February, we're looking at opening. So we'll go through all the permitting and process that goes with that, but we wanted to get the application for the license. So, anything else? Any questions or any comments?
Where is this?
The 191, the old Sears building.
Oh, nice bit of front.
Yes.
And you're planning, is it gonna be a cafe or a production facility?
It's a new cafe, cafe restaurant like we have in East Hampton and Northampton.
Yeah.
And we're consolidating our baking in the back of the building. So we have a Amber's Bakery and an East Hampton Bagel Bakery that we're consolidating together.
Okay.
So a combined space in back and then a cafe in front.
Great.
So we look forward to getting going.
Somebody just brought, well, they go frequently to one in Northampton that I work for, each orthopedics. So they're always picking up bagels and things. But somebody brought in a big tray of banana bread.
Yes, we make the bread.
Oh, my God. Better than mine, I have to say.
There we go.
No problem.
Yeah.
Delicious.
Anyways, yes, we look forward to opening.
Welcome.
And meeting the town and city and everybody.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Am I asking that you make this license contingent upon the final payment of fees? I believe you're still working with Stuart President.
Yeah, I left a message.
Yep. And also until he has his final, until the final inspection and until the certificate of occupancy, please.
Okay.
Second, would the contingency be articulated?
Any further discussion? Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Any idea when you will open? Just thought. First week, first second week of February?
Okay, yeah, so pretty soon.
Yeah, we'll do a, probably a soft opening and then a grand opening right after or something.
Excellent.
So we're looking forward to it. All right, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Literally every time you walk through town hall, he's like Pepper from Sid.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then next we can do the farm winery, Ragged Hill.
Yes. Hi, I'm Ann Garwood. This is my father Steve. We are the co-owners, partners of Ragged Hill Cider Company. We're in West Brookfield, Massachusetts. We have our own orchard where we grow all the apples that we bake, natural farm cider, hard cider. So we've been asked to be a part of the farmer's market in the Hampton Mall. And we've been a part of other farmers markets. Currently, we're doing one in Woodster Canal District. We do Sturbridge during the summer and West Brookfield during the summer. So it's something that we're familiar with. We do small one ounce tastings and then bottles for sale for take home.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions or concerns or things?
This has been approved by police chief, fire chief, and building inspector.
Okay.
So we're gonna go.
Great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. This is the qualification for the whole time that the farmer's market is running.
Yes.
And that one is just on Saturday.
Saturdays from 10 to 2.
And it has an end date on it and the license hasn't been dated.
Yeah, March 21st is gonna be the last date. So it's really only like eight or nine weeks at this point, so, yeah.
Yeah. Good luck. I hope it goes well.
Thank you, me too.
I'll get ready for you on Friday.
Okay.
Great. Now we'll be able to participate in this.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
And we can, did we get them all?
Yes.
Got them all. Just making sure. Public comment? Anyone here for public comment tonight?
No, but I just wanted to say that.
Uh.
The TV.
Who?
The TV.
John.
John, John, somehow people are complaining that the voice isn't what it should be at the homes.
Oh.
Right now?
No, not now, no. This has been in the past, that they have to put it up quite high.
I think the live, my understanding is that the live taping, like right now, the sound quality isn't nearly as good as when you.
Re-run it.
Re-run it on the weekends.
On YouTube. So on TV broadcasts, they're talking about mostly.
Exactly, yeah.
Just to, just to give you a heads up.
Right, because people have to crank it all the way up to here.
But I think the channel, they're like, oh, yeah.
All right. Since Ed is here tonight, we can do, next thing on the agenda, human resource, present recommendations to the select board for cost of living increases for fiscal year 2021. And you have a proposal here recommending a 2% increase, so go ahead, I don't want to steal your thunder.
Sure, yeah. It's fairly standard, there's a few different numbers out there between the consumer price index, you know, federal government raises, state raises, and then kind of, you know, what's in the region. And the consensus right now is right around 2%. I think that's a pretty solid number. So with your approval, we would like to put that in the budget.
Is that all within the operating budget that we can handle that?
Well, I don't know, I wasn't prepared to answer that question.
I don't have a problem with the COA. And that also means step increases? You didn't say that.
Well, that would be across the board, so, you know, every, every step increase. So.
Every step would be bumped up 2% or just the COA across the board?
Like across the board. And then, you know, of course, if someone's eligible for a step, they would move into that new step.
Okay. And then the, just not to put you on the spot with this.
No, you're fine.
But the compensation and classification plan that we did.
Yes, so.
You're probably in that.
I am.
Going back and forth.
I think, moving forward, I think it is a good idea to implement because it has a very structured way of grading positions in terms, you know, whether that's exempt, non-exempt, you know, there's a solid objective point structure. Looking at the current positions that we have in terms of where they fall into the proposed classification plan, most people are being paid appropriately to the benchmark. Some might be a few points above or a few points below, but they're generally competitive. There are a few folks that kind of outweigh the benchmark that I think we should bring into the benchmark. Naturally, that might upset a few folks and go, oh, I'm not getting a raise, but that person is. But because of the survey, we discovered that, you know, maybe they need to be paid a little more equitably would be the justification, so. I did have a few folks ask me, oh, am I getting a step increase this year? I'm not exactly sure how the town decided previously whether someone gets a step or doesn't. I've just asked those that feel they should be entitled to a step increase to email me, preferably with a justification, so I can back up that recommendation and, you know, as long as I will move forward with that. Barring any questions?
Any other questions or?
Motion to accept as a recommendation?
I know, we never really discussed it, but those steps at one point were in or out or, you know, when this restructuring thing, they were going to take it into consideration or something. Didn't we discuss this a few times?
The step increases? Yeah. And I think we were waiting for, dig into it.
Yeah, but the new, the new information that's out now was probably even given compared to the old way we did the steps. That's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, currently it's a pay band. And ideally, you know, in the modern sense, most have a band, you know? Let's just say 25 to 35 an hour with the goal of having, you know, maybe some type of evaluation system and rewarding for performance versus step increase. Some have a palatability for that versus others, you know, we can, we can look at that, but, you know, but the band also allows a little more flexibility. So you have, within the band, you have your hiring range and then you have sort of your retainability as people are more tenured, you have like an extended range that you can move into. So, yeah. Any questions?
Did you make a motion? Do we have a second?
Caveat, the wage study doesn't apply to union positions.
Yeah.
Most union positions have a preset stepping grade, so that's, that's a whole set.
Unless it gets changed, as it has in the past, in, within negotiations, if they come to us and ask us to take one off, put one on, and that type of thing, then we have to look at the, about what the steps actually are. We do have that authority to do that.
But overall, I do think the proposed pay grades and pay bands are fair and equitable and they do allow, you know, kind of move into expense for a more seasoned tenure employee. Maybe they don't want to get promoted, but you don't want to lose the institutional knowledge. It does allow some flexibility to provide for that.
Good.
I don't know if we got a second.
Oh, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Excellent.
I accept for.
Okay.
No, they're not.
Different ones, yeah.
That's right.
I think that's my only item, so have a agree.
Well, I was gonna ask you, actually, do you mind sticking around for our, the transition of personnel?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Discussion, yeah.
That's definitely.
I think Tim should be here shortly, but.
Of course.
He's not coming.
He isn't coming at all?
He's not, he's not, okay. He did write you a letter, it was, it's attached.
Okay, yes, I got the letter, I just didn't know if he was.
Do you want to get them?
Well, do you want to do that or do, let's do, we could do.
The Airland Collective.
Yeah, we can do the Cannabis Control Commission municipal notice.
Not that you don't want to hang out with us all night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we gotta have somebody in the audience.
So, the background, I guess I can just read this, Airland Collective Inc.'s application for a marijuana retail license is under review by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission pursuant to 935 CMR 500 dot 1021D. The commission sent notice to inform the town of Hadley that completed adult use marijuana establishment application for the Airland Collective. The applicant has indicated its intent to operate in Hadley and the commission requests that the town of Hadley confirm that the applicant's proposed establishment is in compliance with the municipal bylaws or ordinances. So, you know, that, you know, the location you guys have selected is zoned for appropriate use and that, you know, you are currently applying for the special permit through the planning board. And, you know, our legal opinion appears to be that, that's, that's good and we can write a, a letter to the CCC just saying that you guys, you know, meet the criteria and are working on the applicable permits. So, and we think that's good.
That's what it sounds like. I know David had a conversation with legal at the CCC and my other partner, our other partner, Jim Koonahan. And that's, that's sort of meets, Christian's description meets the spirit of the conversation, it sounds like.
Yeah, I learned that across the Commonwealth, some communities require that CCC give their permission prior to granting up a special permit, setting up a chicken and egg issue. So, given the past practice of the CCC, we are in a position of writing a letter that you substantially conform to the zoning bylaws, town of Hadley, and that you're actively pursuing a special permit through the planning board under section 30 of the zoning bylaws. So that's, that's all that we're looking for. And I think that's enough that the board can vote on tonight.
And that's what, that's what will satisfy the CCC in your mind and what you guys agreed to on the call.
Based upon my, my understanding of how CCC works, that's, that's sufficient.
Great.
Do you know the date in front of the planning board at this point or?
I want to say it's next Tuesday.
Okay. So you, you could theoretically have that in hand by their deadline anyway.
Ah, we're getting close to that one.
Yeah, it's the end of the month.
So the deadline's January 29th.
Yeah.
Right, and you're meeting on the 22nd.
Theoretically, Molly, I love you all. Our previous go-around took, I don't know, many, many trips to the planning board. But hopefully, this is an amendment to the existing set plan approval, or existing special permit rather is more accurate. We're told it should be pretty straightforward, let's hope it goes that way.
So do, we need to make a motion to have you submit this letter?
Yes, please.
Okay, make a motion that we submit the letter in accordance with the Spirit of Joel Bart's legal counsel.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, yeah.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah.
Want to stick around?
I'm kidding, my wife is a self-encumbered character person, mother.
Well, we can just, transitions of personnel, we'll just do that real quick. So, this year, we're expecting some changes in town hall and the first one that we're going to be faced with is the retirement of our building inspector, who is looking to retire no later than April 16th of 2020, putting us in a position where we need to get that ball rolling of hiring some sort of replacement. And he has sent us, is he there?
I'm checking.
You just said he wasn't coming.
I thought, I thought he was.
Yeah. He is?
I lied.
Oh, all right, we could wait.
Did you do that?
Are we good?
That amber.
Got the one for the.
Here, why don't we, why don't we pause the transition of personnel discussion and move to public safety emergency generator? And is that good? Oh, well, you want us to?
I'm here.
You ready? Okay, well, let's do transition of personnel. I'm gonna stop skipping around.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Yeah, I thought you were coming around seven, I was gonna wait, but I didn't know for sure.
Three o'clock.
Then Jennifer said you weren't coming, then I was like, okay, we'll get it started.
You're on time, you're late.
But you're, yeah. No, you're good. So we, we just kind of.
You missed a good dinner.
I'm sure, I thought you were bringing a spread for us to share.
I could've, I had your tickets.
So, yeah, basically, I just said that, you know, you're looking to retire April 16th of 2020. We just need to work on finding some kind of suitable replacement, whatever form that comes in. And you wrote us a nice letter that details several different options. And, you know, I just wanted to engage the board and see what we want to do, you know, and to summarize it real quick, are we just looking for kind of a direct building commissioner replacement, which could be challenging? Swapping positions, so to speak, with an alternate inspector and yourself to, so that alternate inspector could become the building commissioner? Or looking at partnering with another town where we might have our own local inspector but share a building commissioner?
Or share both of them.
Or share both of them.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a lot of kind of options on the table, but I think we kind of need to narrow it down a little bit so we can move forward in a direction in the, in the time we have, because we only have, you know, three, three months or so.
Three months.
So, that, that will get us close.
So what's, what's X thought on this?
A little new to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You know, my only thing, I guess my only question is, what's in the best interest for the town of Hadley? Is it a set commissioner or the shared services model? What's the most sustainable and beneficial to the town? So, you know, that'd have to be a real well-thought-out detailed plan. So that's really my only thought, is just considering that, that balance. You know, if we have our, our own commissioner or inspector and their salary that allows us more flexibility, I know there's a little tie-in with the fire chief during inspections, so.
Or a lot, yeah.
So, you know, if we entered an agreement with the town, I would hate to see it go in a direction that wasn't productive for both towns, because then it's a disservice to everyone. So that's really my only thought, is making sure we have a well-thought-out detailed plan.
And I think if you look between the towns around us, that I think that a commissioner in Hadley is more important than what, we have a lot more building going on than actually what Amber's or Northampton has. I think we're busier than what they are.
And we are.
And I, I would hate the thought of having to share it with either one of them. I think we ought to be the main base. And if we thought we had the time to share with another community, then that would be a benefit to us, but I think we need our own designated person.
Yeah, I, I feel similarly. I think a shared service would be a good model, but I feel like kind of what you're saying too, Ed, is we have three months. That's a very, not complicated, but it's outside the norm of what we're doing right now. And so to try to do that and the amount of time we have might be putting ourselves in jeopardy of losing services or trying to fill it in for a period where we can't do it. So kind of having that replacement person would be good. And then filling out how to maybe expand the department or something, because I feel like, you know, you have a lot of experience, you've been doing this job for a long time, so you can.
Um, you know, like, my only thing, I guess my only question is, what's in the best interest for the town of Hadley? Is it, um, a set commissioner or the shared services model? What's the most sustainable and beneficial to the town? So, um, you know, that'd have to be a real well-thought-out detailed plan, um, so that's really my only thought, is just considering that, that balance. You know, if we have our, our own, um, commissioner or inspector and their salary that allows us more flexibility, I know there's a little tie-in with the fire chief during inspections, um, so I. Or a lot, you know, um, so, you know, if we entered an agreement with the town, I, I would hate to see it go in a direction that wasn't productive for both towns, because then it's a disservice to everyone, so that's really my only thought, is making sure we have a well-thought-out detailed plan.
And I think if you look between the towns around us, that I think that, um, a commissioner in Hadley is more important than what, we have a lot more building going on than actually what Amherst or Northampton has. I think we're busier than what they are.
And we are.
And I, I would hate the thought of having to share it with either one of them, um, I think we ought to be the main base, um, and if we thought we had the time to share with another community, then that would be a benefit to us, but I think we need our own designated person.
Yeah, I, I feel similarly, I think a shared service would be a good model, but I feel like, kind of what you're saying too, Ed, is we have three months, that's a very compli- not complicated, but it's outside the norm of what we're doing right now, and so to try to do that, and the amount of time we have, might be putting ourselves in jeopardy of losing services or trying to fill it in for a period where we can't do it, so kind of having that replacement person would be good, and then filling out how to maybe expand the department or something, because I feel like, you know, you have a lot of experience, you've been doing this job for a long time, so you can, you know, do a lot where one person coming in new might not be able to quite step in and do quite as much.
You may look too easy. And I think it's going to be very challenging.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I've been truthful with all of you before, I am not doing all that I could or should do, and I think this is a good time to really look at it seriously and say, you know, let's take the steps that needed, and the reason, you got the money, the money's coming in, so, like I said in the, in the letter, if you bring in a local, there's a, there's a number of things that I'm doing that the local can do at a lower salary. The, our problem that we're faced, I really hope, I've been talking to David a lot, and he's spearheading this, I really hope that, that there is a good fit out there for partnering with the town. It might not happen, but I think with the, if that can happen, I think it's good for both of us, because there, you can transition back and forth between those duties. There, there definitely needs to be a local. Now, should it be full-time or part-time? That's up to you guys. The real problem is, there's not enough inspectors out there, and to try to find a good fit with somebody that's good, part-time, might be very difficult.
Yeah.
Most of our towns around us, Northampton too, is experiencing really difficult times in getting the help that they need for those towns.
And while we've been having any discussions about shared, the possibility of shared services, my understanding is that we were, we were looking to a smaller town, not to.
Right, a smaller town.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. Go to a smaller town, and there, I mean, there is a good fit, and the hope is it will work, um, but it, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen. David's brought up some very valid points on if that, if you can do it, uh, there are issues that, that nobody's actually ever faced. Is this happening now? Yes, it is in this, in the eastern part of the states, only because there's not enough guys out there. Uh, I, I think it's going to actually start to be the norm, and you're going to see what's happened down in some other states, and that's how it's, how the fit is happening. You're sharing qualified guys that are very specific in certain duties, i.e., motels versus high-rise and things like that, we're not, certainly not there, but, um, I, I wish there was more certified inspectors out there, it's extremely difficult to become certified right now, but I am certainly an advocate to get this changed at the state level, I'm very vocal about it, because of what's happened with one particular person that I thought was extremely valuable to be an inspector, and they shot the person down. For, meaning, here's the problem, they have to vote to allow you to take the exams, how ludicrous can that be?
You're missing the state board.
This is a state board of building regulations and standards, you can't just go ahead and take the exams.
And isn't there, is there like an apprenticeship period too, where you have to do X number of?
With the local, yes, you, as I put in the paper, um, you, you, yeah, the first step is the, you prove to take the local inspector, pass all the exams, and there are a number of them.
Yeah.
And then you have to get the title, meaning you have to work for a town to become a local inspector, and then you have to be approved again to take the next set of exams to become a building commissioner, and then take the, take those, there's the, there's been the problem.
Yeah.
At the state level. But I think, I mean, I've, I've made a lot of suggestions to you on what can happen, I don't know all the ramifications one over another, politics and whatnot, I mean, you can certainly go out and advertise and see what's there.
Yeah.
It's going to be predicated on what you, you advertise, if at all, advertise a salary, but certainly, you know, the, the, um, the, the people in-house right now, they, that can apply, just like anybody else would.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't see that as a major issue, um, but it's, and I, I've told David, and I've certainly told you, Christian, I'm not going to let the town hang.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I mean, I, I'm here, I'm part of this town, and if the idea of switching titles, I'm perfectly happy with that.
I think there's three brand-new buildings that would really appreciate you staying in the course.
I think two will be done, hopefully, by the time, uh, but yeah, I mean, whatever needs to be done, I'm not going to just walk away.
At this point, funding-wise, I mean, your, your estimate, estimate of eleven thousand dollars is not much, but from the full-time commissioner to a regional commissioner is only, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars, so it's not, not an extraordinary amount of money.
No, and based on the amount of money that we are bringing in, and we, we have substantially increased the fees to cover this and other issues that we're faced with, and there's a lot of things that we need to do, and certainly, it's the hope that we can accomplish them, but we need bodies to do it.
Yeah, so do we want to form a committee, like we've done in the past, to hire, um, you know, this level position, uh, you know, it'd definitely be good to have a fire chief on there, and, you know, and obviously, it would be on there, but I don't know if we want to do anything along those lines, or how we want to handle this hiring process.
Yeah, and I think the.
Exploratory process.
Committee's gonna be in direction though.
Yeah.
Right, so do we, do we run kind of a bifurcated path and post, but then ask David to continue conversations with.
Other.
Whatever, other communities you might have had in mind, so that we're not, you know, just.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
Killing one idea completely, we can't hurt to keep the conversation going, yeah.
No, you first, you get.
I, I just want to say, uh, being a little bit selfish, but I've worked with him for a long time, and we have a very rare thing in, in Hadley, I've heard nightmares, and Tim has too, you don't normally have the partnership between the fire department and the building commissioner or building department like we do here, so I would truly hope that Tim would, you know, his recommendations on, on the person that would be doing this, it, it's critical, because we, I don't know how we would, I don't think, I think Tim would probably the same thing, I don't, I don't know how I would do it without him, and I think he feels the same way, we kind of, we kind of fill in those gaps for each other, and, um, in an effort not to take a step back, just because, you've seen my office, you know, we have thirty projects going on right now, plus the other eighteen-hundred inspections we have to do, um, it's, it's just something, we've got to hit the ground running, we can't have, you know, it's gonna be tough to have a, a learning period for this, I understand that might have to happen, but.
It's gonna happen either way.
As long as, um.
Luckily, this is a small town, and the D P W, and the fire, and the police, and the building, and the Board of Health, and everybody's worked together over the years, you know, everybody kind of knows what everybody else is doing here, you know. Most of the time.
I think that's probably a good idea, just kind of a parallel path, you know, put it out like it's a replacement, but then pursue other options and kind of see what comes together and.
See what comes. And I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
Yes, you can actually do all three at the same time, and then make the decision. Go out and advertise, see who's out there.
Sit together?
Yeah.
Again, I think we have one person that is a great fit. That person can apply.
Yeah.
But in the end, if you don't like, you can, you can hire him.
Yeah.
Just change the titles.
Yeah.
If that's doable, and if, if something works out with, with what David's doing, with partnering up with the town, that is, to me, is the greatest fit that we can actually have.
Yeah.
But I, I emphasize that, that you need to really pursue, maybe not right now, but very soon, you need to get a local inspector involved, we have way too much going on, there's a lot of things that we could really benefit with an extra person in there.
Maybe there's a retired building commissioner that lives in Hadley that would want to do a few hours a week.
You know, you know, unfortunately, this is a position that gets, burns people out big time, and the ones that do come back, they're coasting.
Yeah.
And, I, I mean, I've gone through that route many times.
Yeah.
And it, it isn't there.
Okay.
This is a very, unfortunately, it's become a very difficult job.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
Not as much as that poor guy, but close to it.
Well, let's go out to the, let's set up a.
Job description.
Yeah, I'll schedule some time with Tim, I'm a little ignorant when it comes to inspections, I just know you kind of walk in, you look, encode or not encode, so.
And since David isn't here, then I can nominate him to serve on the committee.
But, um, we'll, we'll come up with, so, but just to be clear, at a minimum, we need a full-time building inspector.
You need a building commissioner, that is a requirement by co- by law.
Okay.
Yeah, that is a requirement, and you can't just hire anybody.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
But yes, each town must have a building commissioner, don't have to have a local, but you have to have a building commissioner.
Yeah.
But if, uh, let's just say everything falls apart, what does Hadley absolutely need to make sure things can get developed, like, we got to figure that out, so I'll, I'll sit down with Tim, we'll come up with a good job description and kind of go from there, get it posted.
I mean, everything's written on the match journal, has it, have you got a copy of this letter?
Yeah, I do, I, I read it, uh, this morning and yesterday, but, like I said, maybe there's something I misread, I don't fully understand the difference, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Should somebody from the Board of Health also, I'm just thinking about people that work together, if there's gonna be.
I work more closely with Mike and then, um, the, the police chief.
Okay.
But I, I did talk about, uh, what we can do at that front, and I think there is things that we can improve on. Okay? And I have a meeting on Friday with a, a local town administrator to talk about shared services, so I can give some information at that time.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see any reason why, again, let's just explore all of the options and land on what's gonna work best for us.
Yeah, I think you need to cast your net as wide as possible.
Yeah, and I think having a few people that can work on it is good, um.
So it'll be it?
Yeah. And anybody on the select board?
Let's wait for the posting, isn't it?
We want to wait for that? We want to wait for that? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, then we can finalize the treaty.
Okay, yeah, let everybody know, okay, but start there and, uh, you know.
Yeah.
Sooner we can get it posted, the better, so.
Posting's the easy part.
Yeah, 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 while creating it, and, yeah, yeah, all that stuff.
Well, there's enough, there's enough, um, advertisement out there that we certainly can put something together that fits on what the, what Hadley needs.
Okay, great, well, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for all the work you put into this.
I know, thank you, Tim, for getting that to us and everything else, so.
I apologize, I wanted to have it to you a long time ago, but, you know, the reason was.
You seem better, so, hopefully, yeah.
I'm a lot better.
That's good.
But not there yet, unfortunately.
Yeah, don't have the sunglasses on today, so that's a good sign.
I don't have my shades on anymore, which is great.
Stays with you for a while, unfortunately.
Well, well, thank you.
It still bothers me though.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, and.
Generator.
Well, we have one more, uh, I want, I'll let David take over.
Okay.
One more one?
One more transition.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, ready to go to the next agenda.
Well, I'll make a quick, uh.
No.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, the, the board very generously extended my contract to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, and I'm letting the public know that my intention is not to renew at that time, so the last day will be December thirty-first of this year, uh, giving a year's notice, um, and I will assist in any way with any kind of transition, uh, I recommend that we begin with an internal review, that, you know, offer the position internally, I think you have some talent on board, uh, I don't know if they're interested in taking up my job, but there are people who could do it, if, if that does not bear fruit, then I would expect you to do an external review, uh, with an eye towards hiring a candidate by July first, and one of the things that we need to be aware of is that right now, all the towns are in budget season, and that's a really bad time to be searching for a new town administrator, uh, the good town administrators are not going to leave their communities in the middle of budget season, uh, so, but if you expect to hire by July first, we can have a, uh, we can have a six-month overlap where I can assist this person to come up to speed, so that there's continuity and minimum of disruption, um, and, uh, I also expect that you probably will be talking to professional recruiting firms, which will have a presence at the M M H trade show, uh, in two weekends from now, uh, this is a model that has served very well in other towns with triple-A bond ratings, that you have a long period of both notice, uh, long period of looking for the right candidate, uh, and then a transition time where that candidate is brought on board and becomes the go-to person, and then I become, take a much more supportive role rather than the frontline role of town administrator, uh, I think that's the best way to handle this transition.
Yeah, well, thank you for your service to the town and for giving us this notice so that we can make it a, I think, a really good transition, so. And that will be our, our next thing to work on, so I don't know how we want to start our, our searches, or, you know, how we would go about an internal search, announce that type of thing, but something worth considering.
I think in the spirit of offering it to folks internally, making sure everybody's well-aware of it, um, but I think it can be a very condensed timeframe, I think if there's anybody out there who's been, if anybody wants it, they've already been thinking about it, and I would think that they would come, come forward fairly quickly, um, because I don't want to delay going out externally, if that's a direction we're gonna go into on.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, you know, I know, so if you, if you post something internally, is there a time requirement, or could you literally do like a one, one or two-week post something?
Yeah, I mean, you could do, you know, two to three-week posting like you would in a normal position.
Is it like one to two?
One to two, I'm sorry. There's no, there's no real law that says you have to advertise for a certain time, you know, and I would say two weeks is the, probably the industry standard.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I would, um, you know, accept the recommendation that we, uh, today's the fifteenth, so by, like, Jul-, uh, uh, January, whoo, January thirty-first, you know, that would be the end of that, and in the meantime, I think we should be working and have the external, like, ready to go immediately. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's fair, and then how about as far as, uh, working?
That would give us some time at the, at the contact.
Exactly, the other night.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask too, just about a professional recruiting firm, if that's something we would be interested in pursuing or not pursuing?
Yeah, I mean, you have a number of options, community paradigm is, is pretty frequent in government postings, um, the particular school at UMass Boston, the name is escaping me, they do a lot of executive searches.
No, not college.
Codes.
College.
So there's, there's quite a few out there.
Actually, the Beacon.
Where, where did you, where did you find the advertisement for your position?
Uh, indeed.
The Beacon, I mean, we've advertised in the Beacon before, you know, for both commissioners.
Yeah.
You know, the building commissioner and. I, I mean, it's worth to see what's out there, I mean, we, we've had, we've had a great selection again with, with the H R person, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. You know, for, you know, I haven't been here very long, but I, I appreciate that you respect my opinion, um, I think for, um, where Hadley is at, and the momentum to keep its stride, I think you would get more. I think you'd get more bang for your buck using a professional service. That's just, you know, for where Hadley is going and where we are right now between the AAA bond rating, we've got some complex issues with marijuana and the Route 9 widening. I think it would be in the town's best interest to use a professional firm.
When you think of Hadley in the long run, my predecessor was here for 16 years. I'm going to be here for about 16 years. So for the last 30-plus years, we've had two town administrators. So I think that you want somebody who is going to stay a long time, do good work, move the town forward. I think that, I agree, working with a professional recruiting firm is going to be in your long-term best interest.
Well, the other thing I just want to throw out is that, you know, I know we've talked an awful lot about the governance of the town, you know, whether or not we should adopt some form of a charter and move to either a strong. A strong town administrator or a town administrator. And because, I mean, that obviously hasn't happened, and you can't switch horses midstream right now. But I would strongly encourage us to be thinking during the hiring process that, I believe that's an inevitability. Whenever it happens, because of the growth of the town scene, I think the, many of the employees actually are looking for that to happen. They haven't been given the opportunity to speak about it. But if and when the time comes, we should have an eye towards the new town administrator as being somebody who may be capable of assuming that role as well. Because you don't want to hire somebody and then a year and a half, two years, five years down the road even, say, okay, well, you know, we're going to a town manager, you don't have the skills, it's whatever. So I'm just tossing it out there.
I'm very adamant about not following Amherst's thing for their charter.
Amherst, Amherst has a town council, a town manager. That's a whole different ball of.
I know, but.
Knowing a lot of systems. Every time we talk about it, I get calls about it.
People will, people will try to.
Will try what?
Model.
After different things, so I mean.
Yeah.
Well, it's up to the select board to bring it to town meeting. And again, that's why people spend so much time and thought, you know, thinking through this and interviewing and finding out what works in other towns. I think, again, if you interview a lot of our own employees, you're going to hear people extremely frustrated with the decision-making process and the lack of accountability in the town. And we've been talking about it.
I'll take a word off to you guys on the day-to-day stuff that you're dealing with.
And again, five part-time people, one way through.
And I totally agree with what you're saying, Molly.
Thank you.
It needs to go forward in a different direction. We are stifling ourselves in a lot of these daily decisions and getting us, it's not counterproductive, it's not productive in getting efficient decisions made. I'm not saying that the decisions are wrong, it's just the timeframe on a lot of this stuff.
Yeah, I know, sitting in the chair position, this is my first year doing it, and it's, you know, it's a big-time commitment. And having somebody that was, had more of a leadership role underneath the select board would be, I mean, David does a great job, but it's hard being a volunteer and doing all these things and being responsible for all these things.
And just signing off on strategic issues, not daily stuff that a strong town administrator can handle. The employment issues and everything else that you deal with. And I, I totally agree with Molly on that. And she is absolutely right, that most employees feel the same way as I do. It's nothing against anybody.
No, 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 no.
It's just the whole way that we're handling this stuff is starting to be so cumbersome because of the complexity of a lot of stuff we do.
It's a $20 million organization, we have to look at it like one.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's not an organization, it's a business.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's a $20 million entity, it's a business. And a business wouldn't run with a, you know, a rotating five-person board, nobody running the show.
And I do agree with you, Joyce, no, you don't want to be an Amherst.
Yes.
And that is so different. We are unique, and I think that we can do better at what we're doing.
Yeah, I think we just need to tweak it more to what our needs are and what our wants are. Because I don't think anybody wants to get rid of town meeting, nobody wants to get rid of the select board.
Absolutely no way.
We want to keep all those things, it's just how do we?
Reorganize yourselves to be better at what we're doing.
Yeah.
And always, so it's the bottom line is money. So it took us all this time to get an HR director.
Yeah.
It's taken us a long time to do IT and other projects that we've done. It's just not, you don't have a tree out there to pick anymore.
No, we don't, but I think it can be changed.
And people are tired, I was going to say, we spent a lot of money this past year.
Yeah.
And it showed with the last elections that they did not want to increase their taxes anymore at this point in time.
No, I think what you're also seeing is a lot of people saying it should be part of capital. Start putting this stuff into capital instead of out there for voting.
Yes.
And I.
Yeah, for overheads.
And I'm one of those people that, I've been harping on that forever. It should be part of capital. That's what it's for. That's what we all voted for.
You know, we haven't certified cash yet.
Yeah, it's a problem.
That's really pathetic.
Yeah.
So anyway.
All right, let's not digress.
So, you know, I, obviously, Amherst has a town council, a town manager. They've got like a 30, population of 30,000 people, they're essentially a small city. We still want to keep small-town field, there's some great options, some hybrid options between representative town meeting. You can consolidate boards and commissions, not to give you more work, but under the select board, the select board could take on some of that additional. You're already here four hours once a week, with a couple more items on the agenda. You do have some great options that I think could streamline the structure of your government. There's a couple more elected positions that you might be able to move toward appointed. There are some great short-term options while you have a committee established to move forward with a charter. We've done a lot of reading over the last couple of weeks, so I think, I think, and you'll be able to, I think you would get the town to probably be able to vote on it. Especially if it involves getting a license moved through a little bit quicker, I think some people would jump at that bit.
Well, I'm in my 17th year, I was here when David was.
I remember that.
I think, you know, you've had your ups and downs and ins and outs, and you've had lots of different people sitting on this board. You fought the fight for sure, but you've gotten us where we are, so never been an easy job. And thank you for your diligence that you've given Hadley over the years.
Thank you. It's been an honor and privilege to come to work every day.
Wow.
And I have to say, one of the things I've most admired about you is your thick skin.
Like a rhinoceros.
Like Joyce, I started on finance committee, and you were mentoring me, and it was your first year as town administrator. And I remember many times sitting in your office, looking at each other, going, what have we gotten ourselves into? So, but another 12 months to come.
Yeah.
We'll have many good months working together, we have a lot of good work to do.
Ayes. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Well, just a question, has there been any consideration of using a headhunter for the building commissioner?
Not yet. That doesn't mean that we couldn't, you know.
I mean, I'm hearing how hard it is to find people, that's what those people do.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
I think, I think when you're at the trade show and you're talking to professional recruiting outfits, why not talk about the two positions?
Yeah.
We can find out, yeah.
Yeah.
What the project is to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so you know, that the, there's three building official associations in the state. As soon as it is advertised in one town, it is to every town. Everyone gets them immediately. So we do have, it'll get around the entire state. It won't go beyond the state, but it will stay, it will go to every town.
Are there any other states that their building commissioner license carries over to Massachusetts?
No.
No, okay.
What I said was, you can ask for the waiver.
Yeah.
There are some states that have, they go through the same certification process.
I'll get the process started.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking, so, okay. All right, we'll end that there. More to be continued as far as all those items go, and should be an adventure. And if you are set, that was everything I had for you, so thank you very much.
Like, two and a half weeks of military leave coming up, so this will all be ready to go before I go on military.
Oh, when is that, roughly?
I just sent it out to everybody too, not too long ago.
Okay.
The 27th to the 14th, so January 27th.
Okay.
And I'll be available while, I'm not like going anywhere crazy, I'm just going to Fort Lewis, Washington, so I'll be available.
Okay.
Washington State?
Washington State. Say again?
That's where my mom is.
I'll bring you back some coffee or something.
Okay, let's move to the public safety complex emergency generator.
Thanks, Tim.
Sweet to.
Thank you, Tim, yeah, thank you very much.
Back for dessert?
Yeah.
So our emergency generator, speaking of the recent election, was the turned down by the voters, I think it failed by one vote. And so now we're faced with looking for alternative forms of funding. As Joyce mentioned as well, we still do not have certified free cash. So that is a possible solution to our problem if we had some free cash available for this purchase, but we don't know that yet. And that would require a town meeting vote. I don't know if, if Chief, you have some stuff, some updates for us on the generator? And then maybe David can go through some of the options that he's laid out.
Yes. So, so as you all know, the generator actually failed the night before the vote.
Yeah.
And so we've been, we've been wrangling with portable generators that we're having some issues with. Yesterday, myself and John met with, and also Scott McCarthy from DPW, we met with our FM Generator rep. So they're the service company that does the maintenance on our piece. And that morning, they actually installed the new starter, which was the cause of the failure. So the, the current generator is now back online. And I had asked you to postpone just so I could get some information. I just want to have all of our ducks in a row, so everybody's very aware of what's happening and why it's so important that this occurred, that this isn't, this isn't something that's, you know, where, this is an actual need, it's not a want. So we met with this gentleman, his name's Steven, and he sits on pretty much every NFPA standard committee, UL committee. John can attest, he really seems like he knows what he's talking about. We are, however, still going to be bringing in a couple of other companies to get some additional opinions. But I can tell you that FM Generator is one of the few companies that I know that's actually listed on Mima's site as an approved vendor. They are on the state contract, and we have had good success with them as far as them taking care of what we have. So the existing Kato Light that we have, he came out and kind of went through it with us. We went through the system, how it's set up, and it has, basically, it was manufactured in 1992. The station was built in 96. So the engine manufacturer actually went out of business 21 years ago. So it's at the end of its serviceable life. So in order to get parts, you're, it's third-party, it's aftermarket parts, it's people going out into their shed, pulling equipment out to see if we can find parts that are from old, old pieces. So the building has come to find out we are not fully generated by this generator. There is one, one breaker panel that apparently is not providing generated power. So we went through all this and took a look at the system as a whole. And so we discussed what our options were for what we wanted to put in, to make sure that we're going down the road. According to him, he feels that the generator that we currently have was oversized a little bit. So he's recommending that, he feels that we don't need the same size that we put in. He did factor in for if down the road we decided to, we have in our DRA report, an additional bay expansion and some other work being done at the center station. So we wanted to make sure that if that ever happened down the road, we would be able to provide the generated power to that space. And then to also pick up whatever's remaining on, that's not generated, on generated power right now, and make sure that's all, all picked up so the building would truly fully be generated power, on generated power. Basically, we went through multiple options. Their, their main brand that they are recommending, it's called the Blue Star Tier 1. It's built in Wisconsin, we're trying to find something that's built in the United States, so it's, the parts are easier to get. It has Perkins motor in it, it would be applicable to the station. And we had a long discussion as to how we want to power it. So as of right now, it's powered by natural gas. In his opinion, this gentleman feels that there are some concerns with natural gas. We haven't had any issues with it being supplied by natural gas, but if you think of the moratorium we have, if you think about the explosions in the Merrimack Valley, if you think about the structure of our area here, if there's any interruption in natural gas service, then you're, you don't have a generator. So we were in discussions with him, and his recommendation was switching to a diesel-supplied generator. That way, we would be able to, we could fill it ourselves. So we could call up Carriage Oil, we could call up Cerner Oil, we could call, we could have our DPW come over with their transfer tank if for some reason we ran out of fuel and fill it.
In an emergency, like what happened in 2011, they couldn't get propane, we had propane tanks over at the water station, they couldn't get propane delivered, where they were running pretty low. To keep that up in mind for the drinking water side. We were lucky enough with the 10 pump stations we got on wastewater side, that they were all diesels except for one natural gas that we, that we do have. But we ended up just getting Carriage with a truck one day when the roads were passable to fill up all the generators, whatever was running. Because a plant at the time ran for seven days on the generator, and the power was out that long. NFPA, well, go ahead.
No, you can finish, that's fine.
Yeah, NFPA rates the generators at 24 hours of runtime at 300 gallons, which is a fairly small tank.
But that's a, you have to remember, that's a full capacity, so that's the entire, everything, the maximum. So if you, if you're going to actually equate that, you're looking at probably 72 hours.
Yes, 72 hours is what he was estimating. Again, with the water and the wastewater, they go by 100% days. I think we were at seven days, and DEP changed the regulations to, I mean, five days. I think we changed, they changed to seven days now of capacity, which is kind of outrageous. But in a natural disaster though, if, if there's an earthquake here or something, let's say, you're not going to have natural gas. I can tell you that right now.
Is it interchangeable with other fuels like JPA?
So we were, basically, so there's some negatives too. So we have the new biodiesel that can be, can be an issue with, with the generator. So you have, you may have more.
Because of emission standards.
Yeah, so emission standards have to be met, but also just maintenance. So they said if you're not careful, you have to make sure that you're maintaining it, so that you don't have water building up in the tank and plugging up your filters, and so it's, he kind of said that it's not like, not all unicorns and rainbows on the oil side either. But we also did discuss a dual fuel. So diesel fuel, running on diesel, primary diesel with a backup of natural gas, which, it doesn't switch to natural gas, but the diesel is supported by natural gas. So it extends your runtime of the generator. So it's kind of like our compressed air foam system on our fire truck. We add air and foam to our water, and we quadruple the amount of water that we have. So it would extend the time, the runtime of the generator. So we're looking at that as one, another possibility.
And his max, his maximum capa, life expectancy of the generator that we have right now is basically 20 years.
Which is.
A year.
It's at, it's at 28 right now.
Oh, 28, okay.
We've got generators that we've had this discussion. We've got generators that we've had this discussion quite a few times, we've got generators from back in 1976 in some of the pump stations, you know? The generator was a civil defense generator at Hopkins Academy that just ran the boilers at one time. I mean, this discussion's been going on for 30 years that I've been on with, with civil defense and with emergency preparedness, so somewhere we really need to look at this issue and, and address it.
So, so he really gave us some really good information, however, we want to do, we'd want to take a look at a couple other companies, so John has scheduled his local rep who does Cummins or Kohler?
Kohler, yeah, Kohler's tomorrow, Cummins didn't get back to me yet.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll give me a call and I'll get ahold of you.
So.
Will you leave a card with Deputy so I can give it to the guy tomorrow?
So basically, I, we just wanted to, we have some options, the generator is now operational. One short-term recommendation was they have a remote monitoring system that we can install onto our generator tomorrow if we want, it's about $1,500. It allows for us to do, for them, our, our servicing company, to monitor the generator remotely, and it'll also allows us on our cell phones, so if there's something that's going on, there's some sort of a warning coming up, it's overheating, there's something, some sort of fluctuation in that generator, it will notify us and we can get things rolling right away. That unit would then also be, we would be able to use that unit on the new, the new piece as well, so it wouldn't be like, oh, we're getting this and we have to throw away $1,500, we could actually, it would be part of the new generator when that is installed. It does cost $200, $200 a year to monitor it, but I think it would probably be well worth it at this point. We can also increase our, our, we're semi-annual right now for our inspections, we could increase it to monthly for the time being until we figure this out, they're working on a price for that for us, if we wanted to go down that option, just so we have eyes on it every month, and that way it would have provided us a little bit more time to actually put together a plan to come up with the funding and present it at the next town meeting perhaps, or make it part of next year's budget. They are also willing, as long as we can ensure that it would be paid, they are willing to do a purchase order, it's a, for, for the sort of diesel fuel generators, it's about an 18-week build time, so there's, there's time, we wouldn't be getting it tomorrow if we ordered it. Natural gas is a bit shorter, it's about, it's about four to six weeks. So like I said, we're trying to, we're trying to get all our ducks in a row on the information first, and then I just wanted to bring that, all that information to you and just see what your thoughts are on the plan of action. I, I have a call into Mass Emergency Management, they're basically said the same thing that they said when we had the, the shutdown, they have those list of vendors that we could, you know, we can call up and request for them to drop off a generator here. That is another potential option, we could keep a mobile generator on site as a backup, however, you would be paying, I mean, it was pretty pricey for the two weeks that we had it, and it still would require them to come out and, and hook it up, because none of us are qualified to do that.
I think spending the $1,500 for the monitoring makes an awful lot of sense because the, the earliest we're going to be able to move forward looks like would be after the next, or the annual town meeting. So, I mean, a lot can happen between now and then.
And does the generator fire like once a week or something like that?
Every Monday it runs.
Okay, yeah.
Runs for 15 or 20 minutes, and like I said, this, this generator's been doing that. Actually, we, I'm not sure, I don't have records of the maintenance prior to when I took it over following when, when Hucky left, but, you know, it's, we, we've been religious and we have, the only, only thing I want to warn you about is that we, it's just concerning because we're, this is, I, I don't think, I want people to understand that when this fails, if we lose mainline power and this generator doesn't fire up, our station goes black, we have 20 to 25 minutes of battery backup, we actually purchased bigger battery backup for our dispatch console. But, you know, if we don't have something that's firing up and providing that generator power, we lose our 911, we lose our, all of our computer shutdown for dispatching police and fire, we do have a backup plan where we move our dispatchers into our mobile trailer, we actually set that, put it, put that into place when that, when that happened, we were lucky that we got mainline power back on, but because the generator was down, we kept it in place, and that way if it did go off again, we were in conversations with Eversource, they reassured us it wouldn't happen, but we had that trailer running and ready with the heat on, so if we had to move our dispatchers out there to do something, they could, but we still wouldn't have, have the ability to, to answer 911 calls, it would have been going to our, our backup, which is East Hampton. So, just want everybody to understand the ramifications of this, so it's a little bit nerve-wracking right now.
Yeah, and again, I think, just going to state the obvious, in retrospect, you know, we can't unring the bell, but, you know, we should have handled this differently, so I think everybody's kind of learned that when it's something that's critical, we're not going to hopefully do that again, put it out to the voters.
Well, the free cash didn't help the whole situation too, so.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying, you know, I think it goes to, you know, kind of rethinking how we're doing the campaign again.
You know, even if we had to put a half in the police and half in the fire budget right now for next year, which is only months away, five months away now.
I don't recommend that course of action at this time.
Try like selling the French Street property.
David, do you want to go through our options, possible options?
So, I think your best option is to borrow the 100, 5,000, and that's still the price, right?
We're going to say that's the price for right now, just until we get
Seems to be a little less, but.
I think borrowing within the levy is your best bet, that requires a town meeting vote, you could call a special town meeting, or we can wait till the annual town meeting.
No, let's do that again.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we have the monitoring in place and whatever the chief and the committee have recommended.
Or we should make it to May.
That's why I wanted for you to wait on making the step until we have the true facts.
And we'll, we'll have three accurate quotes to look at roughly, and I think all three of them are on state bids, so, then you can, you'll have something to look at and make up your mind what you want to do.
Why are we not, why couldn't we sell the property? Why are we holding on to that?
That is an option.
It was a great option, we don't want to be
$1,500 for the 2,000.
Just got to go back in the general policy.
Doesn't, sale of property, the proceeds go into a special stabilization account, which you can then appropriate by town meeting vote for any legal purpose.
Oh, that would be town meeting vote.
Yeah, so let's see what happens between now and then, but I mean, again, all votes are leading to town meeting, I agree with you right now, in the absence of that, doing it within the levy seems to be the logical choice and.
So you could use free cash, but at this time I cannot tell you that you're going to have sufficient free cash to perform that.
Right, and we understand that with the free cash is there, that again, we, this is a two-year proposition.
Yeah.
So we need to be looking at that bucket for two years.
In 2011, they had a grant program through the state, and I see, you want to talk
Is it?
And I see you talking about Republican Kerry, see if there's any available, I mean, representative. Maybe that's an option?
That is, that is an option.
A grant available, write a grant for it?
A state appropriation.
Yeah, that would be baking it right into the state budget, it is an election year, there is going to be more money on the table.
Yeah.
It will take longer for that money to become available.
When you get free cash, you have to buy it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
David, this is just, you know how if we declare a state of emergency, it opens up the funds from all departments, you know how if that emergency declaration is declared, does that include projects, or is it only town budgets?
Well, this, you can legitimately call this a, an emergency and do expedited bidding and, and also expend money and beyond. The problem is you're going to have to make it back up at your next annual town meeting, and where those funds to make up the difference come from, at this point in time, I can't tell you you're going to have those funds.
Right, so my question for you was, you had in there as, one of the options was taking money from contingency from the north station, not that I want to do that, but that's money that we're, you know, we're still months and months away from completing that project, would that project fall under that emergency declaration?
It possibly could, you would need to get bond council's approval for that. What you're in effect saying is that money that you borrowed for a project on one side, part of that money can be used for a project on another side, you would need to have that dynamic approved by the, by bond council, we can make that happen.
I was just wondering if it could be put back in if needed, you know what I mean? So if we have that extra time to go to town meeting afterwards, if we wanted to fast-track this and get it going, if that would be an option, then?
Yeah, this is borrowing outside of the levy, so I would have to talk to the financial people to make sure that that would work. This is, that's probably your weakest option.
Okay.
And not because you don't have insufficient contingency, but because of the balance of the borrowing.
The way you get the money.
Yeah.
And, and town meeting vote on the two, so I thought we just went through that with the senior center and the library switching phones.
Yeah, we couldn't.
We couldn't do it.
And how about money out of stabilization, is that a possibility?
That's a possibility.
But that would require a town meeting vote as well?
Two thirds.
Yeah, okay, so.
But there's still other options here, but you would have to do stabilization.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm looking at that property sticking out. No, I'm not stuck on it, but you know what I mean?
Oh, no, we should.
It's a one time.
We do it all the time for snow and ice in wintertime, the DBW, so if they expended their budget through police and fire, we should be able to cover it July 1st. If we declare it an emergency.
It is, it is possible to, to overexpend your snow and ice budget, but you still are obliged to bring it back to balance. So you need, you need money to do that.
So I think that's a good one, right?
Yeah.
So I will explore with the treasurer about the front 6 French Street, whether we can get that fast-tracked, that's going to require a town meeting vote anyways, and we'll set this up for town meeting.
Yeah.
And we can talk to bound, bond council, find out how viable that particular option is. And I'm going to talk to Representative Kerry about getting something for Hadley in the state budget, so I'll take a picture as to what our chances may be and what the state may be looking for in terms of donations to the town of Hadley.
Wouldn't, is Dan coming back to town anytime soon?
Dan Kerry?
Yeah.
He's got hours at the senior center.
Last Friday of every month, one block.
Last Friday.
All right, well, thanks, and see what we can do, it sounds like town meeting vote is going to be the next option, most likely, so.
But if you get that monitor system, we should.
Put the monitor system, yeah. Go from there. Okay.
City BG?
Acts of special legislation, we just are asked to petition the legislature to protect land on the Hoyle Ridge, as well as asked to petition the legislature to transfer Article 97 protection from the North Happy Hall Ballfields to Zaturka Park.
I need a formal vote so that I can transmit these to the
Is there anything we have to read to be formal? No, just, okay, thank you. Any further discussion on those two items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Our community development block grant preparation.
The Hoyle Ridge. And Biro Valley, or?
Yeah, yeah.
You're always thinking.
What's the conflict, I'm just curious.
It's not a conflict.
Oh, yeah, he doesn't want to vote on that one, yeah.
I see.
They voted Norrell on this rule, I'm not taking the blame for it.
I'm just curious, that's okay.
So for the
We sometimes question it too, yeah.
For the community development block grant prep, we are asked to designate the town administrator as the environmental certifying officer for the application. So this is, yeah, basically
A housekeeping place.
Housekeeping item, and if we get the grant, we can always change, we can always do something different, but this would help with our grant application for now.
Second, I think I heard Joyce say so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Valley Bike Share Program, we are going to put that on hold this week, we can set that in a couple of weeks. DLTA grant applications, our DLTA grant solicitations, PVPC has asked us for direct local technical aid grants, I had a few that I need to still email, David, we met today, I don't know if anyone else has anything different, I can always list the ones I had, but, David, you had a couple, one was solar.
Yeah, so I think we should re-enroll in the best management practices for large-scale solar development, and the reason for that is that the Massachusetts program requirements keep on changing, and in order to stay on top of that dynamic situation, we should enroll in the regional best management practices for the small, large-scale solar development. I also think that we should go to explore a best management practices for information technology use and social media use, this is something that's a widespread issue and changing all the time, and it would be good to have something that a number of towns could adopt for their employees and their IT purposes, so.
That second one surprised me, I, I would think that there would be best practices out there now, especially social media.
Yeah, but I don't think it's all put together in a form that's easily digestible by small towns in particular.
It seemed like to me too, from the last MMA conference, that's an issue, that's, there's a lot of gray areas when it comes to social media. And adopting the policies was something they were encouraging people to do, but they didn't really have any examples.
There's no, yeah. That's right.
Yeah.
And PVPC has a regional IT program, so I think this would be a natural for them. It's a use that's needed by multiple towns, it's best management practices, and they're in the business, and we get, we can submit as many applications as we wish, there's no upper limit to that.
Okay, all right, so those, those are two that you're submitting, but they wouldn't preclude us from doing?
Absolutely.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, and then I had, looking at regional flood pinch roll, as we had talked about that last meeting, these aren't necessarily us, but, you know, looking at zoning bylaws and accessory dwelling units possibly, master plan update and correlate, correlating that with the CPA plan, because some of the thing that came out of the housing was those two plans were slightly going in different directions.
Does the flood control plan, don't, Mike, flood control plan, emergency management got quite a bit to do with that, don't they?
The flood control plan?
Yeah.
As far as?
Just like, you know, it came up the last meeting, just about the dike, Army Corps of Engineers looking at a broader regional approach possibly to trying to just upgrade that, those large infrastructure projects.
Well, our MVP program that we just had, and then also the, they're redoing the flood maps now as well, so I think that's probably what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's a lot, yeah.
It's a long way, it's a long way, but, I mean, the MVP I would say is probably the closest part.
Yeah, is that regional?
The MVP?
Yeah.
It's local, I believe.
Just having, yeah.
For local funding.
Yeah.
We have a local hazard mitigation grant as well, but it's a little bit more difficult to, it's a little bit more restrictive, I think the MVP is probably going to be a better option for us.
And then I had regional water, wastewater, looking at that, and possibly bylaws having to do with student housing regulation. And possibly bylaws having to do with student housing regulation.
Those, yeah.
Something along those lines, so.
You guys just had a view on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was something that came up, but, and it was something Tim mentioned as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking about the housing, because there's a lot of conversation about that right now. So between the various forty, chapter forty, whatever, programs and applicability to small towns, you know, some of the, these programs are out there, it makes sense for the city of Northampton, but not necessarily us. Helping us hone in on ones that we could actually do something with. And student housing, I mean, yeah, so I don't know if we, we would probably not buy in from the planning board, right? If we're going to ask them to do anything related to.
Yeah, so I'm going to be talking to the planning board.
And I have to email you the list, so.
Yes, please.
Anyway.
Yep.
Okay, anything else there? I think we are on senior center, library and fire substation updates. Does anybody want to start? Fire, you guys have anything?
We met today, they're, they're on schedule, they're working, trades are working inside now. The roof, they're prefabbing the metal roofing offsite right now and doing the trim work. So they are hoping to actually be a little ahead of schedule sometime in the next four weeks. It is going, it was quite well.
Library, we met, the library building committee met on Monday night, and that meeting went well. One of the things that came up was a joint sign for the, that would sit in front for both the senior center and the library. So there's a design that's going to you, Paul, for your evaluation. And then you've been invited to the next building committee meeting and hopefully make a decision. That's on February 10th. Other than that, again, I think it's pretty darn obvious what the, what's going on. So, I mean, everybody can see now the, the building really kind of filling, framing in, if I can put it that way. So I think the OPM is earning, earning his stripes right now. It's all good.
Senior Center, you want to?
We're moving along further, and we're working on our dedication. Would you please, we know David Phil's name is incorrect, we're correcting that. Would you make sure everything on here is correct, you personally, or anything else?
There is an extra one on there.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys already have yours?
And the question is, does the town have a twin seal anywhere we can?
I have multiple copies that I can give you of the seal in multiple different forms, JPEGs, PDFs.
Bring a little different spacing on the lines, but we're looking for spelling corrections. Or anything that is an obvious omission, because we don't do this very often, and want to make sure that those who should be included are included.
Oh, spelled John's name right.
Okay, I'll take him back and correct for a moment.
Yo, he wants his middle initial on there.
I could just correct everybody's email you.
Do you think, do you think we should have the new senior director's name on there?
Yeah, she's on there.
She's on there.
She's on her.
And they have their years listed. It's not a very clean copy, because we try to conserve ink at the senior center. So we print in draft form, but. Okay. Sounds good. So we actually did two signs, but one was, one was, we did two at smaller size.
Are you guys doing a brass thing like that? Yeah.
You're going to correct David Phil's there? Oh, yeah. With the shape and the second, he likes both.
We already know that.
Yeah.
Yes. We heard that.
I, I told them on the, whatever day that was Tuesday, about that something. I don't know when they need it by though.
We'll let them have, we'll find out.
Figure it out, yeah. All right, then we have two.
We'll be in the building before the election, and it'll be up.
Well, that's very ambitious.
Have you been over there?
Our, our final date for hunch list and everything is May 1st, and we're going to have to have at least two weeks to make sure things are working. That sounds like April 15th to me. The election's the 17th. We won't have a new select person.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, even better.
Yeah, just two change orders for the senior center. We already voted on these at the the finance committee meeting. Thank you. One's a catch basin, that's change order number 34. And one is two additional ballards at the sidewalk entry, just to get them matched at the sidewalk between the Legion and the senior center. And that's 033R1. The first change order is for $6,893.25. The second one was $2,277.95. They're under $10,000 total, so we did vote on them already. I don't know if we need to re-vote at this one, but just.
Be done?
I don't think so.
Make it aware. Okay, great, that's all I had.
And the inside is looking really good.
Good.
Yeah, we had a tour after our monthly senior center building committee.
After that, we invited the senior center board of directors and the friends board, since they're all very involved. And everybody's really excited about this.
Yeah, actually, it looks like a building.
It does.
There's rooms and there's, yeah, all kinds of stuff, it's crazy.
Nice. And if any of you would like to see it, we can make arrangements, let me know.
And then town administrator report?
Mostly financial right now. We've touched on the major points with other projects. With the exception of the ditch cleaning, because of the mild weather, DPW crews have re-engaged with that project and proceeding with the ditch cleaning.
Do you think you're going to be cleaning ditches in January?
Actually, there's some portions that are better off to be frozen. Some of the folks on.
Yeah, exactly.
You can still dig in them, you know, as long as there's four feet of frost.
Yeah.
You know, reasonable amount. The water's always flowing, so.
So your 2020 revenues to date through December are looking good. Your expenses are keeping within not tolerable limits. Safety committee meeting is going to be held fairly soon with the fire chief to talk about the MVP planning. Our audit, we are on the cusp of getting our free cash certified. So now's the time to start planning the FY19 audit site visit. And so we reached out to the lines and the heat to schedule that. And as soon as I have that information, I'll provide that to you. We have tax, the free cash, we're going to be working on with the Department of Revenue and a consultant on Tuesday next to get that done. So we hope to have that completed this week, next week. We have budgets and articles due on February 5th. We have a public hearing on the community development block grant on that Thursday. February 19th, I'll be presenting my proposed FY21 budget. We have primary, presidential primary on March 3rd, that's Super Tuesday. April 14th, annual town elections. May 7th is our annual town meeting.
Great.
We have immediately taped the program that we ran lately, and we're hoping to put it on the town website soon for everyone to see. But the basic message is, if you're a homeowner and your income, not assets, but income, is under $49,000 a year and you're single, you may qualify for certain home improvements. We're not calling, not talking about remodeling the kitchen and granite counters and things, but if you need a handicap ramp or perhaps you need a roof, or perhaps you need.
Safety repairs.
Some safety repairs.
Specialized showers.
You should, you should look at this and fill out the paperwork that was in your newsletter or go pick up another copy of it at the office, senior center office.
Was that well attended, Jane? Were there many people there?
No, but it was attended.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, sometimes with the income limits, that can be tricky. You know, where people don't necessarily want to go, but, so I think having it aired and that getting the information out is a really good idea.
Because it's a short time period that they have to show interest. And if we don't get enough interest shown, then they can't apply for the grant. So please look at this, consider it, and if you have any questions, you can call Haley.
And the grant amount is going to be north of half a million dollars. So this is something that we want to be aggressive about. Whatever we can do to boost our scores, that will be to our overall benefit.
And as far as, like, the Hadley Housing Authority, can they do any kind of larger application?
It's individual.
It's individual only, so it's not.
But if you're a renter, you can use it.
Okay.
Yeah.
They just need your landlord's permission.
Okay.
I didn't know that, that's, somebody asked me that, so I'll tell them if they can.
I think Golden Court is staying in, leave all the renovations in.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, we have given them money.
Yeah, because I thought they were applying for some CPA money to do upgrades over there, so.
A portion of it done from town.
Yeah. Okay, anything else there? So announcements, I just, we have a town election coming up. It's coming up on Tuesday, April 14th. We have a bunch of deadlines if you're looking to run. Thursday, February 21st is the last day to obtain nomination papers. Tuesday, February 25th is the last day to submit your nomination papers. Tuesday, March 10th is the last day to file nomination papers with the town clerk. And Thursday, March 12th is the last day to withdraw your nomination papers. And then Wednesday, March 25th is the last day to register to vote for town election. And the seats that are up or the offices to be filled are moderator, and Randy Isers, the current moderator. Select Board, Molly Keegan is up for a three-year term. Assessor, three-year term, Raymond Shala. The Board of Health, we have a three-year term, Richard Tessier. Planning Board, we've got a five-year term, Joe Zagrodnek. School Committee, we have two three-year terms. Tara Bruger and Keith Shannon. Elector under Oliver Smith-Will, we've got a one-year term, Sheila Kanditsny. Library Trustee, three-year term, we have two, Maureen Devine and Alan Weinberg. And Park Commission, we've got a three-year term, Andrew Kopacki. And then Housing Authority, we've got a five-year term for one, Jack Yusko. And so, yeah, if you're looking to run, nomination papers is February 21st. 25th for the last day to submit nomination papers to the registrar for certification. And March 10th is the last day to file with the town clerk. I don't know if we have any other announcements? Oh, yeah.
I don't know, I think you should read this. I can do the full story.
Okay, so this is a letter that we received. This is coming from Ron and Chris Wiskewitz. On behalf of the family of Helen Wiskewitz, I want to express our sincere appreciation to honor Helen with a tree planting. This honor is dual, and that her tree was the start of an annual Arbor Day celebration, and she would have been very pleased. I want to compliment the tree committee members, their enthusiasm is palpable and their hard work did not go unnoticed. The amount of thoughtful planning and effort by those volunteer members to include their children and their teachers along with the scouts certainly helped the children to learn at an early age the importance of trees on our environment. Although that cold October day felt more like winter than autumn. That was the truth. It was quite a parently effort the committee put into the event. They organized activities for the children, including Smokey the Bear. Committee members provided refreshments donated to Hadley businesses. They reached out to Weinsec Nursery to donate the trees, and they coordinated the town DPW to plant the trees. This was certainly a lot of work. We're sure that the select board is as proud of this committee as the Wiskewitz family is. We're looking forward to future Arbor Day events and plan to fully support their work. And it looks like there may have been a donation as well. Yeah, very nice.
Thank you. Thank you for your donation. Any other announcements?
There we have it. I can announce condolences to your wife.
Yeah.
Passing off her uncle.
His name was Levy Carrier.
Sorry for your wife and her family.
Thank you.
And I guess I have. I do, I have the honor of mentioning that my mother-in-law just passed this past weekend. She and my father-in-law ran subs out of service for 50 years. Besides working at Pro Brush all her life, she still put her time in at the garage and pumped gas and did whatever she needed to do down there. She always had a smile, she never was intrusive. She was a good mother-in-law.
All right, and we have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Night, everybody.